Good evening.
Evening.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the work session to order for June 11th. We will have a regular board meeting just following this session, too, just to let you know. Dr. Spence, I'll turn it over to you for items of information.
All right, we'll start with the April financials for Ms. Cody.
Okay, so we did not have any budget amendments in April. So our, our total revenues came in at eighty-nine point six percent. Our expenditures are at seventy-six point eight percent. And currently, our budget position is at eighty-three point three percent. March sales tax collections were received in April in the amount of three million, one hundred, one thousand, eight hundred, forty-one dollars. And sales tax collections received in April of two thousand and twenty-four were three point six seven percent lower than in April of two thousand and twenty-three.
Questions?
Any questions?
Okay, so moving on to the investment analysis. Interest received in April was seven hundred, twelve thousand, two hundred, fifty-seven dollars and fifteen cents.
Any questions for Ms. Cody? All right, and we'll move on to the two thousand and twenty-five budget update.
So first of all, I want to apologize for the last minute change in the agenda. We will not be able to adopt the budget this evening. I'm gonna have to rerun the consolidated budget summary ad to revise the amounts in the special revenue and capital project funds. We'll have to hold a second budget hearing later in the month before June thirtieth to formally adopt the budget. So tonight, I'm presenting the updated tentative consolidated budget, which is the general fund, the special revenue fund, and the capital projects fund. The general revenue fund estimated revenues are a hundred and eighty-three million, eight hundred, seventy-five thousand dollars. And the estimated expenditures are a hundred and eighty-two million, six hundred, sixty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. This gives us an excess of revenues over expenditures of one million, two hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. And I'm gonna circle back and give a recap of those revenue and expenditures after I present the special revenue funds and capital project funds. So the special revenue funds are made up of our federal programs, school food service, athletics, workers' comp, and unemployment. So you can see that we have an excess of expenditures over revenues of one million, six hundred, seventy-six thousand, three hundred dollars. The majority of that deficit is from the annual workers' comp premium of one point two million. Starting in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, we were no longer self-insured. So this will be an annual expense that will be paid out of fund balance. And then our capital outlay, the biggest change you're gonna see there is we have no estimated revenue in local taxes. The April sales tax revenue collected in May actually took us over the hundred and twelve million dollar cap. So we will be able to collect May and June, but that revenue will be reported in this fiscal year. So the other local funds is our interest revenue, and then the state funds are the capital outlay funds that we receive. The five point five million is the transfer that we make every year from the general fund to the capital outlay fund. And moving forward, we will have a deficit balance, a deficit balance since we have no sales tax revenue. So those expenditures for ESPOSS three and four will just be paid out of our fund balance.
Any questions?
Yeah, can you just slowly, for like an English major, go back and tell me once again, why are we running the ad again? And like, if somebody says, Mike, why are we running that again? What do we, and what's gonna be the new schedule again going forward for the hearings? Or we don't know that yet?
We don't know, because we'll have to determine the day that y'all are available.
Tell me one more time, I was listening, but.
I have to revise, revise the amounts in the special revenue and the capital project funds?
Got it.
Yes. The general fund was correct, but the other two have to be revised.
Because of the ESPOSS numbers, correct?
No, there, there, there was just an error on it.
Oh, okay.
So I, I don't think I'm understanding what you said about the capital funds that will be spent during this time that we're not collecting ESPOSS. You said it's coming from the general fund?
No, it's just the fund balance.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just the ESPOSS three and four fund balance, yeah.
Sorry, I heard, for some reason, I heard general fund and I couldn't reconcile how that would be.
I could have possibly said that, but it's the, it's the fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Cody?
Just a little one, I guess. So financially, we're okay? I mean, I, I listened to you and it's all over the place for me.
Well, so why don't I pull up the general fund and that might give you a better, I was gonna do a quick recap of the general fund. And this looks similar to what, what you saw last month. But, so we base the general fund, local tax revenue, on a four point five increase in property value, and then the quarter of a mil reduction, which we would be going from fifteen point forty to fifteen point fifteen. And so that has our, let me get a fresh sheet. And, and the, the figures are, are what's on the consolidated summary. But once again, it has our revenues at one hundred and eighty-three million, eight hundred, seventy-five thousand dollars. And I'm not gonna go through everything, but just to kind of highlight some of the, the changes in expenditures. We had the state salary increase for the certified school level and nurses. And then, of course, the state health insurance increase for certified and classified. We had salary step increases for certified and classified. And so if you, if you look at the, at the bottom number, our fund balance is just a little under thirty-eight point three million. So we're definitely in good shape.
Is the state giving us more since they're making a?
It is for the, the salary increases and then the certified health insurance, we get more, but not the classified health insurance. And then we also did the, the local salary raises that we talked about, doing the thousand dollars for the exempt employees and five hundred for the non-exempt.
I've got one thing. This is just for the budget, some, just the proposal. So in other words, that's what we're estimating the budget at. This has nothing to do with us, you've got point two five mil that say we wanna do more or less.
Right, we'll set that in August.
That hearing in August.
Right, once we get the official tax digest, then we'll have the miller rate hearings and y'all can make, this is just a tentative budget based on the quarter and the reduction.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Flexible benefits proposal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At the beginning. At the beginning of this school year, actually, wasn't even the beginning of this school year, we started hearing from our staff members regarding our flexible benefits, which includes our dental insurance, life insurance policies, things along those lines. Just concerns about some of the processes that were happening and just some displeasure with some of our vendors. And so from there, we, we just started listening to them, of course. Some concerns were lack of responsiveness from Georgia Breeze, which has been our vendor for some time now. A lack of local in-network providers has been a concern, and unannounced processes for staff. For example, staff members have been covering their children for years. And this past year, they had an unannounced, they had to verify that their children were their children after carrying the same kids for the last, I don't know how many years. And it, it really caused some concern with our staff members. So from that, that's kind of how we got to wanting to seek out whether there was another way we could do this, and there is. Several districts in the state use vendors for their flexible benefits. This does not include our health insurance. Health insurance will stay with state health benefit plan. So, and follow two thousand and twenty-three, a core committee developed a tentative deadline and timeline. We worked backwards from that deadline from when we want it to be done. And we began to, in, in search for school districts that had recently completed the benefits RFP process. And we were able to find several school districts in the state who had done that. Finance, purchasing, and human resources reviewed and began to craft an RFP to be prepared to put it out for, and later in the school year. So in spring of two thousand and twenty-four, the core committee finalized the RFP. And then we established an evaluation committee with a cross-section of Glendale County Schools employees. That included secretaries, teachers, a various mix of people throughout the district. During this evaluation phase, the RFP was issued on February the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Ten vendors responded to the RFP with nine chosen to continue in the process. Each vendor that was chosen, that met, the nine that were chosen was allowed to make a presentation and conduct the question and answer session within a given amount of time with the evaluation committee, May thirteenth through the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And those sessions were held here at the board office. The evaluation team debriefed after the sessions each day, just kind of talk about concerns or things they liked about the various vendors. We continued in the phase in that the committee members completed a rubric on each of the nine that were, that presented. Rubric scores were tabulated and then they were ranked. The core committee then checked the references of the top four vendors based on those, based on the rubric. And then written references were uploaded for the evaluation committee as a whole to review, to see if maybe those, those references would sway them, change their minds about those particular people and vendors. After review of the references and the entire process, the committee chose American Fidelity Company as, to be the vendor for the two thousand and twenty-five FY, well, it actually starts in January twenty-five, from January one, two thousand and twenty-five to December, two thousand and twenty-five vendor. We wanted you to know about some key factors that we considered through this process and how we came up with the person or the, not the person, but the company that we chose or the vendor we chose. Number one, all vendors have access to the same insurance companies. They all had access to the same insurance companies, even to the ones that Georgia Breeze has access to now. They all have access to those. Customer service was a primary consideration. Many times, our staff members are trying to call Georgia Breeze, they can't get anybody on the phone. They can't get anybody to help them or assist them. So we really listened for how our staff members would be serviced. That was big for us. Because when our staff members can't get anybody on the phone and then our benefits coordinator can't get anybody on the phone, that's a concern. Then we also really want to make sure we, to hear the experience of the vendor that transitioned the school district from Georgia Breeze to a vendor. That was also important to us because if there's any complexities or anything that they may run into, they've seen it before. This isn't something new for them. This is something that they've helped other, other districts walk through before. And that was important to us because we are leaving something that we've been on for quite some time. An in-house service department, they, knowing that our staff will be calling the actual company and not a third-party vendor was very important. You'll see that even at the bottom. That was important so that there's continuity in the answers that our staff members would be getting. That was important to, to the committee as well. Also having non-commissioned-based employees and counselors, that was another big consideration as well. We wanted to make sure that our staff members weren't being hustled when they met with people to determine their benefits, that they could get the best information that they could without somebody trying to push them into something that they may not want to be pushed into. A dedicated account manager assigned to the same school perennially. This really kind of came out, and American Fidelity was one of those company, was the company that we really heard this from. And that is, in several school districts in Georgia in which they were, they have a particular account manager that has been at the same school from one year to the next. So then the staff members become familiar with that particular account manager. So it's almost like you're, you're building a relationship with someone over the years. And that really stood out to our committee. And then no third-party enrollment counselors. So when, during open enrollment, when people are coming down to talk to our staff members, it's not somebody outside of the company that's getting our staff members' information. We're talking about some sensitive information that would be shared with these people. And if they're not directly working for the company, that was a concern for us. And then open enrollment support, having somebody that can ask the questions to, how much is this going to cost? And what would this service be? And what about my conditions that I have now? And being able to get that information, you know, be able to tell them, you're over-insuring yourself, you know? And be able to give that information to them as they need it. And then also ensuring that digital and print resources was a part of the, the entire amount that'll be paid. So with that, the next steps would be board approval. We definitely are seeking your approval to approve American Fidelity as our vendor. And then next, we'd have to meet with the chosen vendor to determine the implementation timeline and collaborate with the chosen vendor to determine the district products. Because we can choose the products that we want. We can get them, we can say, these are the products that we want, and then they go out to the market and bid those out. And so we will make those decisions and work with them, and then finally determine those products and get into how much those will cost. Then we'll plan for the fall of two thousand and twenty-four open enrollment season because, believe it or not, it'll be here towards the end of October. And so we'll have to be able to work with them to make sure that plan has been completed. And then finally, with our benefits becoming effective January one of two thousand and twenty-five.
So this benefit program is for certified and classifieds?
Yes, ma'am, anybody who is eligible for benefits.
So when you did the committee that kind of helped select, were they from all departments all through the district?
We had eight different people, clerical, from transportation folks, school folks, district office people. Yes, ma'am, we had a cross-section of para-professionals were even involved in it as well.
And does this, the vendors that American Fidelity uses, are they going to be able to be more accessible locally, the providers?
American Fidelity themselves will be here, and then they'll go out and get the actual companies. And then we'll work through American Fidelity to provide support to our staff.
But I, I guess I'm talking about who you'd actually go see for your dentist or your eye doctor?
In there.
There's gonna be more available locally than?
Yes, they're gonna be working to get more in local in-network providers, yes, ma'am.
When you say you need account managers for each school, and we're considering the assuming local insurance companies put in a bid also, they wouldn't be more accessible being right here in Glendale County, giving back to the community?
The concern, we were really trying to make sure that there were people who could answer the questions across the board and that there were people that were here and enough people to answer the questions for the staff members.
And the local vendor did not have that staff available?
Well, no, I think another, can I jump in? Another big piece of that, too, was that the counselors that were coming to the school were not third-party, that they were working for the, the company. So they weren't outsourcing those counselors. They, the counselors actually were working for the insurance company.
So the local vendor was outsourcing?
That was our understanding.
The cost compared to Georgia Breeze to the employee, would?
Well, so we were not able to provide them sensitive information, so we could not get the exact cost. But some of our references did, in their responses, give us their costs, mainly for dental and vision. And it was very comparable to what we're paying with Georgia Breeze. I guess.
Did we directly ask them, would they be able to have account manager for each school?
Who, American Fidelity?
All the vendors that applied. Do we ask them?
Specifically ask that?
Are you, will you be able to have account manager for a good, yeah, we have account manager for our town?
Each, each one of, each one of them stated that they would be able to be there for open enrollment, but none of them specifically stated that they would have an account manager per school, except American Fidelity, if I'm remembering correctly.
That's correct.
They said they would be there for open enrollment, they said they would be there to answer questions, but not specifically an account manager designated to each school or each couple of schools, depending upon the size of the school.
And also the customer service not being outsourced was another big.
Is there anybody that's using American Fidelity that we know that we have a relationship with that's happy with them?
Coffee County.
I think Pierce County also.
Pierce County.
Along the same lines of what Hank is asking, I mean, I, I know that you're talking about sensitive information and that sort of thing. But did we take, you know, when you choose a plan, a lot of times it's gold, silver, bronze, and here's essentially what you'll have for you or for you and a family. I mean, did you look at what we're doing now versus what, I mean, certainly they could have provided an apples-to-apples comparison of what their rates are. You say relatively the same, are we talking a few percentage points less on, on premiums or ten percent more? I mean, because it is a real pain in the neck to do what we're doing with Georgia Breeze right now, when you have to verify your dependence. And it doesn't happen, it happens more often than you think, it's been every couple of years. But I can, you know, folks can send a lot of birth certificates in for three hundred bucks. You know, if they're paying one fifty, now it's about to go to three hundred, you know what I mean? You'll, you'll hit more complaints about that. So I just wanna make sure that, I mean, though we're up there, that's all cost as a key factor. And that's not gonna be the only factor, but I didn't see anything side by side and said, their goal plan that includes this is gonna, it is, it's kind of aggressive. I mean, I, I know we've gotta get something done, right? But to get, and I mean, they do this for a living, so I'm sure if they assured you they could do it, they could do it. But to have that in place, to have our employees make good educated decisions by October and have it in place by January first, I'm a little, you know.
I understand that, I understand that concern.
Because you're gonna be locked in, because you have, if you have a family, you have to have dental vision, you're gonna have to go with something January first.
And honestly, right now, we don't even know the Georgia Breeze premiums right now. We don't know the Georgia Breeze premiums right now.
But we know what we're paying right now, though, we know what we.
We do know what we're paying.
And they're certainly doing it in Coffee County, so I mean, Coffee County's doing this, they could have provided, Fidelity could have said, okay, Coffee County's rates right now.
Exactly.
Or this, and you're, and you're paying right now, right now, you're paying this for Georgia Breeze.
And that's what you said.
I mean, we, I did have a, a response from Pierce County, and they did give me their rates, and it was in line with what we were paying with Georgia Breeze.
How important, you know, I know anytime we change something, we change financial software, we change curriculum software, how important is that change from Georgia Breeze, especially that first year, you know, to an independent, flexible insurance benefits? Because we don't know what problems can occur. I know you said that was important, what, what were y'all thoughts, the committee's thoughts on that?
So I, I think that when we heard from the vendors, a common theme from them was there can be challenges coming off of Georgia Breeze. And, and that was why we really just focused on the ones that had experience transitioning from Georgia Breeze.
For example, knowing how many, getting the demographic data of the claims and things like that. Georgia Breeze is not going to provide you with those things. You're going to have to go to the actual insurance company, and they work with some of those insurance companies, be able to get that information for people with Glendale County Schools or whatever school district it's been in the past, other school districts, excuse me. So Georgia Breeze doesn't provide that. It's a state thing, it's not something, they just don't provide that information, and they won't. So this, so going with a vendor that has transitioned someone from, from Georgia Breeze to a vendor, they know what to do in order to get that information to help determine costs and figure out those costs.
So it's different from transitioning from Georgia Breeze to another company. Would the same process be regardless if it was not Georgia Breeze? If we were transferring from another insurance company, would it be the same process?
Not necessarily, because the data would be more readily available from a vendor than from Georgia Breeze. Georgia Breeze at.
But we should be able to get.
Make sure I say it properly. The Georgia, Georgia Breeze just does not provide the reports, whereas a vendor would be able to provide those reports.
Okay. But just because I have not transitioned from Georgia Breeze doesn't mean I won't be able to transition from Georgia Breeze smoothly.
In theory, yes. In theory, yes. But I'm thinking about all of our staff members, I don't want any, it is gonna be a quick turnaround as Mr. Hosey has stated. And I want somebody, and the committee said this as well, they wanted somebody who had done it before because they didn't want, they want a, a less of a chance of a mishap happening in the transition.
But transition from Georgia Breeze or from Roger Givers or anybody else would be a transition. It shouldn't be a different, I understand you saying the data is not really available, but if I'm. But if I'm transitioning from Georgia Breeze or independent life or whomever, the data should be available. And if I have experience transitioning from others, other schools system to my company. And then I also believe me being a small business owner giving back to the community and being here available. And I just don't see where a account manager from American Fidelity can be to our school or two schools or three schools when we can have someone local that can give us the same service and they know our people, they know our environment. They have worked with our local hospital, with our city commissioner, our county commissioners, and we giving back to the community. We build it and we need to build Glen County.
I wanna remind you, this is our recommendation, you guys can choose who you want.
No, I understand that, but I'm just thinking the transition from Georgia Breeze or from anybody to another vendor shouldn't be just based on I have experienced transition from Georgia Breeze. I have, I have experienced transition from any, you know, that's just like we update with the software. We update software and some of them have experience with it, some of them don't, but we learn the software. And we transition the data and the process.
That's, that's just one of the pieces, that's just one of the things that the evaluation committee reviewed, that's not the sole reason.
Did the evaluation committee generate some sort of rubric or scoring mechanism like we do with say our capital projects? That kind of helped determine a rank?
Yes ma'am.
For who was, okay.
Can we get a copy of the ranks?
As a matter of fact, the memo is here with the rankings, we put our top four.
I'm gonna say something that I normally say, I would like to go local as much as possible because that's where our money comes from. So we should share that into our system. If it is possible, I'm not saying, I mean, none of these are.
One of the small business commercials are, is that when we get ready to sponsor our cheerleaders, when we get ready to sponsor our baseball players or whatever, Little League dancing, we go to the small business and ask for this $500 a head. We bare some, go to American Fidelity, tell us staples or whatever.
I mean, were there local, how many?
There was one local vendor, yes.
And they didn't make the top four?
That was one of the.
They did not.
Don't start missing.
Exactly, what disqualified the locals?
They didn't disqualify the locals, they're just not in the top four.
And y'all did like, how many, you say nine?
Nine.
I guess this is something we probably should table and talk more about, because we've given you a lot of information that we're curious about. Where y'all can reevaluate it and make sure we're doing the right thing? That make sense to anybody else?
Maybe you can see a breakdown of the rubric, but like, like we do with our construction jobs and everything else, I think that way we at least look at it.
What's the timeframe? And what's the drop dead date?
Drop dead date? Of course, the sooner the better. Of course, the sooner the better, but you know, I mean, we were hoping for tonight, but if not, it'll be next month.
When are you bringing us back? And I'm, and this may not happen, I'm just asking, I mean, y'all may vote on it, we may be fine, I don't know, but when are you bringing us back?
It's on tonight.
That's gonna be decided tonight, so I mean, I guess technically we could bring this to the budget meeting.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We could bring it to the budget meeting.
That's the option is what I'm, I mean, obviously we don't wanna put it off till next month or whatever.
We could bring it to the budget meeting at the end of the month.
The issue is the insurance company has a lot to do between now and open enrollment, so that's why we need to get it.
Are we gonna break or recess between?
We have an executive session.
Yes, I just wanna make sure, I mean, we can't talk about it by there, but.
Yes, well, in the work session, then have a meeting.
Any other questions for Ms. Seals or Ms. Cody?
One more, sorry. And then don't, don't mistake my questions for like, I'm not, not in favor of the vendor or whatever. And you know, y'all are the paid experts, it was really not our job to sit in those meetings and make that decision, but it is our job to ask questions.
Absolutely.
I just wanna make, I mean, it's Pierce County, like who is their dental provider right now that they've chosen in Pierce County? It's our closest neighbor, how many dentists are in Pierce County, Hank? Not that many? A handful, handful. I just don't know, like right now, I can't remember who we're using, I don't know who I am, who, who's our dental provider right now?
Cigna.
Oh, she just sent me premiums, she didn't send me the providers.
So how do we know, you know, I know they're gonna, they say they're gonna work and get in-network providers, but, but do, you know, how do we know that's gonna happen?
When we make those decisions, I mean, we, they sit down with us and, and give us our options and then we make the decision, as far as I understand, based on who the, you know, we decide who the provider's gonna be.
Maybe it's because I don't understand how it works, so, so they're, they're business and task forces, they're already a part of networks and they can choose. American Fidelity can choose from those different companies that already, whether it's Cigna or Blue Cross, which you, the best one that has the most in-network. And network doctors.
Correct, and that was, that was one struggle with Georgia Breeze is we didn't have a choice. We just had to go whoever they.
Listen, I'm not, I'm not against the decision, you know, I'm just, they're terrible. But again, if your premiums double or you don't, you gotta drive to Weycross to see the dentist, that's a whole, you know, I wanna make sure that's not gonna happen before we say, okay, sure. And it's not, I know we've been talking about, maybe we've talked about this, but it's, it's, you know, it's a, this is our, our joint meeting, you know, and sometimes we don't ask that much of questions, but we have major stuff like this going on, we're gonna be able to vote on it in 45 minutes. I think that's made part of the rub right now, so. And if they want, if they want the business, they can get it done, you know, they can get it done by cover. A week's not gonna kill you when you got, they should be working behind the scenes right now anyway, in my opinion, but.
I agree.
Um, if they think it's gonna happen, so again, I'm not, I'm not against the choice or whatever, and I appreciate the hard work, because I know it's a lot, but. I don't know, I'm a little concerned about the timeline, but if they can, they can push it up, they have to.
When we switched from Georgia Breeze, uh, to Georgia Breeze, they switched our dental with Cigna, our copayment went up, increased. It was at my dentist, my copay went up when we went, when Georgia Breeze went to Cigna from when they left dental to dental. And the benefits were reduced.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not an insurance professional at all, but I do handle a little bit of insurance stuff where I work. And so what, what I see is American Fidelity doesn't have its own insurance company, they're gonna reach out to insurance companies. They're in the broker, I guess, capacity. And really, if it's a non-commission based, there shouldn't be, let me see, it's gonna be based on our census too. But when you look at Cigna or you look at MetLife or whoever else can be a dental provider, there're gonna be differences in local and network providers, there're gonna be differences in coverage, copays, all that kinda stuff. And there's gonna be differences in premium that are gonna reflect that. So you've got to figure out what it is you're going for. Are you gonna take the absolute lowest premiums? Are you gonna take the ones that provide the most in-network people, some kinda combination, out-of-pocket cost, whatever? But when you look at the different brokers, I think if you go to the same insurance providers, as long as everybody's non-commissioned, it should be the same or very similar premium. So Cigna from this broker should be about the same as Cigna from that broker. So I think it boils down to really the service that you get from the broker. Don't hold me to all that, but that's the way I'm looking at it, just to help them kinda compare. You're not really looking at a broker being able to get you a, a special premium out of the same insurance company.
It's value, it's not necessarily all cost, it's value.
Right, right.
What are you getting for your premium, it's a little bit more than you're willing to pay for better service, I mean, most people are, but I agree.
So all that to say, there're just a lot of factors that go into it, so it's hard to, it's hard to base it on just a pure cost. And we're saying, you know, we don't know the cost of the premiums, but if we have other districts that we know are using this and they're kind of in ballpark with Georgia Breeze, but, and a lot of times you'll see too, your first year premiums are gonna be kinda like what, what they get in the door with as far as the insurance companies go. And then, you know, maybe the subsequent years, they, they raise them a little bit, so you never can tell.
We brought workers comp in-house, maybe we bring dental in-house and Hank can set up shop.
No, we took workers comp out from being in-house.
It wasn't Hank doing workers comp.
I wanna remind you that when we come back to the board meeting, if you guys wanna table it until July, you can do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Seals or Ms. Cody? Infinite Campus Renewal, Mr. Benson?
Good evening, as we prepare for the upcoming school year, we have several renewals for you here to be considered. The first of which is Infinite Campus. As you probably are aware, Infinite Campus is our student information database. It is where we house all attendance, grades, discipline, and demographic information for our students. In recent years, several of these expenditures have been moved over to ESAR. And so these expenditures are coming back to the general fund as our, part of our request here tonight. Any questions on the first one, which is Infinite Campus?
I think my question's in general with a lot of these things that we're just renewing. Just, if we're seeing large swings in the annual renewal costs, I'd like to know that.
Sure, and I think that's gonna be the case with the fourth one tonight and we'll address that. So the second request here is for Edgenuity. As you know, Edgenuity is our virtual online learning environment provider, you know, students work at their own pace, working through coursework and there are assessments, built-in assessments that students take part in as they kinda track progress towards student mastery. So this is a program that our teachers have become extremely familiar with and has given us exceptional success towards earning credits for graduation and staying on track, so we are requesting your approval of this program tonight.
I have a question about this one. Are we still allowing students to be virtual students using this platform?
No.
No, okay.
Alternative school, in some instances, when students are assigned to the alternative school, we do allow that.
Okay, I'm, I'm just seeing like the 60 licenses, I guess it is, for Glen County School System there on the concurrent user middle school. Why do we need so many licenses for that one item?
So that is for students that do go to GLC, that's one of the places that we use it. We also use it for students to, if something wouldn't work in their schedule, they do partake in the Edgenuity course. For that conflict.
So we would have 60 middle school courses at GLC?
The, that's a quantity, so 60 licenses are available.
Just seems like a lot.
It's approximately 15 per school. With the four middle schools.
They historically work with us if we go over the number to, they're not, they don't hold us to that number strictly, they, they work with us.
So the third piece here tonight is the Power School Performance Matters and this is our assessment platform. This is where we use to, you know, administer assessments that, and drive our instruction and make decisions from there to identify gaps in students' learning. It is also where we store all of our historical assessment data. Again, this is a program that teachers and administrators have become familiar with and is a renewal, a request for the upcoming year to continue. Any questions on Performance Matters, Power School? Then the last one is a little bit different, so to answer your question, Ms. Sams, the request here is for the purchase of Go Guardian and Pear. And so what's happened here is we're always worried about our student's safety, not only in our buildings, but online. And so we did a pilot this past year at one of our middle schools. And what we found through that pilot is that there's some enhanced internet software filtering that can be available with Go Guardian. And so we had some success there. Previously, our online internet filtering software was Lightspeed. And we were spending approximately $94,000 a year for Lightspeed. And so if you were to go with this recommendation and include Go Guardian, the cost here is 71,000. So you're looking at approximately a $23,000 savings, the difference between. And that's come from basically combining into the, the other products that we already had. We, Glen County Schools had previously purchased the Pear products, which means the Pear Assessment, the Pear Deck, and the Pear Practice. And so this would be purchasing the four programs as part of one quote. With some enhanced functionality.
Yeah, so they're offering a one, two, or three-year renewal, but it's the same rate per year?
There were some savings that would be if we were to go with the year two or year three, if we were paying upfront for the additional years. But the recommendation is just to go with the one-year purchase.
Any questions for Mr. Benson? Ms. Miller?
Creative Curriculum.
Yes, so Creative Curriculum is actually the ELA curriculum that we purchased for our Glee program, the childcare program. And the, the childcare teachers loved it so much and the pre-K teachers ended up going in and watching them. And they were just so thrilled with, with everything that the program has to offer that they went to Ms. Thompson, our pre-K director, and asked if we could purchase it for pre-K classrooms in Glen County as well. So it's a continuation of Glee straight into the three-year-old and then into four-year-old classrooms. So Ms. Thompson had some L4GA grant money that she thought they're gonna lose if she didn't go ahead and use by a certain, by, I believe it's August 30th. So that's what this purchase would be, would be Creative Curriculum for all of our pre-K classrooms in the district as well as all of our Glee classrooms in the district.
Any questions?
You may have said it, what were we using in pre-K before or now, what have we been?
They use their, the pre-K dedicated program from first, from, from their first.
And they get ready to transition into teaching strategy.
This'll kinda be supplemental for those teachers.
So this is, out of the last four, probably we talked about, this is the only new expenditure, but it's grant funded?
It is, it's from L4GA grant. This is the last year for L4GA grant money, and so this is.
Use it or lose it, huh?
So next year is a general fund?
Once you purchase these kits, only the student materials, the consumables will need to be repurchased.
My, my only thing is, and for a long time, a pet peeve has been, let's, let's consume the consumables if we're gonna pay for them, you know what I mean? I can't tell you how many times I've seen empty notebooks come home and it makes me crazy. I can't be the only parent to see that, that, that the map book's this thick and there's nothing filled out in the year, we've got to use them if we're gonna pay for them, y'all.
Moving on to Mr. Blackaby.
This, I don't see the attachment, but this recommendation is for the approval of, the renewal of our Edgelog transportation software. 110,860 dollars. And this includes both the routing piece and the GPS tracking and the parent portal. About 75% of the cost is the GPS and the, and the tracking of the buses. 24,000 of it is, is the routing piece and 86,000 is the GPS tracking and the, and the parent portal portion of that. It's about $600 per bus for that feature.
This may not be possible, this is, just tell, we don't have to decide it tonight, but is there a way to, under the parent portal, and it's probably happened in too much real time to decide, but if your child winds up on a different bus in the afternoons, we have all these bus changes, right? And you're, you're trying to track your child's bus and your bus is showing at the bus yard. But the buses are actually on, you have no idea where in the world it is. And it happens more often than you think where they switch the buses.
Buses break down right off.
Right, so, I mean, I don't know how, is there a way for us to interface that with what we do so they can push a button and say, hey?
So there are ways to do it and we have extensively explored it and have not made a decision. Basically, you have to scan kids on and off of a bus.
Okay.
And there's several different features to do that, there is not a good option yet to, for the Edgelog software talking to it. There are some third-party vendors, but none of them were foolproof.
I mean, fair, I mean, most, most schools are good about sending out all calls and stuff like. I mean, most schools are good about sending out all calls and stuff when bus changes, they'll change routes and stuff like that. I'm just curious about it.
Yeah, it still doesn't help if you're looking at the app and you did not get the all calls yet. But that's the, that is the way to do it, is do scanning them on and off of a bus, which is a good feature. But to use one that we feel like is the most effective would require us completely changing the routing software at this point, which is not an undertaking we need to.
Can we just microchip all the kids instead of, you know, when you go to StubHub and you see all the seats are available?
Kid, not the bus.
I was just wondering, just an idea. I mean, while we're spending money, Hank could probably do it.
But if there was a true emergency, the people at Transportation are gonna know. I mean, they can radio to the.
Right, they know.
They know where the buses are, so.
It just doesn't trigger into the portal to be able to register. Every afternoon, to the right call list.
I think I get it. Might get to several people, and the principals get what the changes are. We know the changes, and Transportation does know the changes.
We have a Google Sheet that they send out morning and afternoon with all the bus changes that we can access.
I never thought about the scanning thing, and that would take more time. It'd be, you know.
It is a good feature in it, but it's not one that's, there's still some glitches in it and some communication with the software, which is another challenge. Paper Cut Software Purchase, and we do have the attachments on here. This is a recommendation to purchase Paper Cut Software for $81,514. This is a software that will allow us, as we're going around a meeting with schools, one of the, some of the feedback we have been getting from teachers in our faculty meetings is that they're not able to print from their Chromebooks the way they can from a Windows device. Chromebooks are not real printer-friendly, particularly in a network printer environment. This software will allow us to route all of our Chromebooks, staff Chromebooks, we're still not going to open this up to students, but staff Chromebooks, to be able to print old network printers. And this will also enable them as, if they were to, for example, come here for a training and they brought a Chromebook with them, they could immediately network to this printer in this building. It wouldn't just print back at their home building. So it gives us that feature to allow them to be able to print. This also has some functionality that will allow us to basically control printing more if we need to. In other words, you can set parameters for the number of copies or the number of color copies somebody may make in these. So we can actually track to see how many copies are actually being made to, you know, maybe get a handle on cost if we need to. Not that we want to limit people from copying, but we can start tracking to see how much, you know, how much printing is going on in different facilities and at different copiers. It also tells if we need to change the type of copiers we have based on the print loads. This will also allow us to potentially migrate away from having as many Windows-based devices, which are a security issue. So this, in the end, can help enhance our security by limiting the number of Windows devices that we do have in our facilities. We're not going to completely eliminate Windows computers, but this will, this will allow us to limit that even more. And even our laptops that we may not use as a Windows device anymore, we can convert those to Chrome devices through this process. The recommendation is to purchase Paper Cut for $81,514. Any questions on that?
Maybe not immediately, but will it help reduce equipment, actual equipment purchases or leases?
It will reduce, certainly will reduce the Windows equipment purchase, which are more expensive than Chrome. But yes, individual printers that we have all over the school system, we can reduce the number of those if we're networking to the larger copies, which are actually cheaper to operate, which then also will in turn decrease the amount of printer cartridges that we're having stock and continually use. As you know, your home, like your home printer, that's much more expensive to operate than a copier is. Yes, so in the end, we can, over time, eliminate some of those devices. This recommendation to renew our Incident IQ Help Desk software for $65,030. Incident IQ is our, basically our maintenance request platform for technology requests, maintenance requests, and also registration, central registration issues as well. And this is just our annual renewal for that. The prices are generally aligned with what we've paid the past years. I think it's about $800 more this year than it was last year. Any questions? And this is guaranteed maximum price for the parking lot and the loop drive-through in the front of this building for $1,164,621.48. And this will encompass all the paving, the curbs, the gutters, sidewalks for the front of this building. It is adding almost 50 parking spaces to the front. We'll be paving some on this side, as well as opening up the pass-through going to the other parking lot to hopefully help the traffic flow a little bit better, as well as removing some of the pine trees that are causing our pavement to have a lot of cracking and natural speed bumps in it as it does now.
So it'll add 50 without putting any paving in the back is all in the front?
This does not consider anything in the back.
Because there's no hard surface back there right now.
The way it's laid out on this side, as well as adding about 15 spaces on this.
There's an old basketball court right there.
Because I know you all have had, you're having to use that area in the back.
Does it guarantee no potholes for 1.1 million?
For a period of time.
Or at least a jacuzzi or something.
It does fall in line with our other paving costs that we've had over the years, which is about close to $9,500 to $10,000 per parking space is usually what parking is running these days. That doesn't mean that the individual parking space costs $10,000. That means all the curb, the gutter, the stormwater run off, the driving lanes, the sidewalks. But a parking lot is usually around $10,000 a space.
Time frame on getting this completed? Time frame on getting all this completed?
Well, if it's approved, we will, probably within the next four to five weeks, we'll start this. We really have to, the scheduling of it's gonna have to be worked out between our busy time with central registration and the starting school. And we're also gonna have to do it in phases. We've talked about doing basically the loop area separate from the parking area. And again, depending on what else is going on in the building and what events and activities, and again, central registration is our primary concern. Depends on the order we do those in. Also, once we finish renovating this wing, the second wing that we're renovating now, and we move to the third wing, the front entrance to the building for temporarily will have to be relocated to this door. So if we're doing that, we obviously can't pave the loop area at that time. So all those have to be kind of considered, and we need to juggle all those together, depending on, again, events here as well as contractor availability at the time. Because we'll have to work out with the schedule of the paving contract or two. Any other questions? Update on East Plus Projects. St. Simon's Phase Five, renovation of the old building on Ocean Boulevard is still underway, as well as the site work doing the, basically what we're calling the courtyard area, which is the area inside the triangle of buildings. We're finishing up the sidewalk paving, canopy installation in that area. Things are moving on fairly well with the renovation part, with the exception of the dining area of the cafeteria. Over the last couple of weeks, we've learned there are some issues with the old wood trusses, which are the original 1943 installed trusses that were holding the roof up. There, there's been some issues seen with the integrity of those and their ability to support the weight that we're asking them to support at this time. So we do have a plan in place, but it's, we'll probably know more in about a week and a half as to how close to staying on schedule we're going to stay. Right now, it's probably not going to put us too far off, but we are gonna have to replace some of those trusses. From a cost perspective, it's not, not really, you know, going to impact the project that much, but from a time, it may back us up a couple of weeks on that. But we are still targeting the first week of school to have, to be able to occupy the entire building, including the cafeteria. We know we'll have the classroom portion finished, but we're pushing to try to make sure we get this overhead work done on the roof completed in that same timeframe. At Satilla Marsh, we, we're in, basically have the entire building demolished at this point from the inside. And have already started putting back the first wing. We've got the ceiling grid and the lights and going back in, and it's already been painted, and the subsequent wings are following. We, all the old asphalt in the driveways have been removed, and we're getting ready to lay all that back down here in the coming weeks. Scheduling that in conjunction with the other project with paving, we have one on, which is Brunswick Highway, if you've been by there. We have all the old asphalt removed. We have the paving base available, ready to be spread out. The tabby building has been removed. So again, we'll line up the paving contractors at the same time we do Satilla Marsh with Brunswick High, so we have all that running together. But in the coming weeks, we should start paving, start paving the Brunswick Highway. We are waiting to have the irrigation well for the baseball and softball field relocated out of the paving area. And we hope to have that done by the end of next week, and that will set the schedule for the rest of the work. At the Goodyear Gym, the renovation work we're doing there, the roof replacement is underway. The metal, the new metal's on top of the roof, and the metal wall panels are about 75 to 80% done. And as soon as that's complete, they'll move to the inside and start redoing the floor. That project's moving along well. Other small projects with East Plus, the rear intercom and fire alarm replacement. That work is scheduled to start on the 17th, is when the contractors are ready to start the intercom work, June 17th. So that should be completed as we roll into the new school year as well. Not an East Plus project, but we are, you know, in, underway in Wing Two. They're framing in for the new windows in the classrooms. All the windows have been removed. Bulk of the work right now is installing the new sewer line. They dug across the hallway, removed all the floor from the old bathroom, so installing the underground sewer lines there. And then we'll start putting it all back together as we move into the end of the summer. I hope that we'll be nearing completion on that. Any questions on the projects?
Y'all got a lot of work to do this summer.
He can do it.
Six dollars per week, right?
We have all the faith and confidence that it's going to be completed.
Moving on, I want to talk about the five years of Facilities Plan. This is basically a formality with the Georgia Department of Education. It's time for us to do a five-years of Facilities Plan. And I think we have about $4 million in state capital outlay funds out there. Is that about right?
Well, we'll get the allotment sheet in about three weeks and we'll know for sure, but yeah, so.
And so basically, the State Department of Education is asking us to, we're asking them for their help in this process. And it's just kind of a formality that always happens when this comes around. And so we're asking you to approve that so that I can sign it, and Ms. Sams can sign it, and you guys will formally be asking them to help.
And one final thing with the Google report, I've already covered the project portion of that. And, but I will drop down to our favorite sales tax chart. In, during the May collections, we collected around 3.1 million, which is just over the 2.9 that we collected the same time last year in May. Which again, I believe Ms. Cody alluded to, that these collections, they did put us over the 112 million mark, which was the cap on the East Plus. I think we exceeded that by close to $185,000. But we do get to collect through the end of the quarter, which means we have at least one more collection period. So if it's a good month in the next collection period, we could see another, another $3 million collected.
Maybe we can get a new parking lot then.
That's not a East Plus project. We could put one somewhere.
It'd be nice to have a article in the paper and report that came in early and then we stopped it. Did what we said we're gonna do, to let the public know that we're spending their money appropriately and we're not taking more than we ask for. I don't know how you word that, but I'm sure there's something.
Moving on, we have several policies discussed that would be, I guess they would sit for 30 days until the July meeting, so. Let Ms. Haywood in.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Madala, for your help with this. Student Code of Conduct, we have just a few revisions to that policy that we'd like for the board to consider. And ask that you allow it to lay on the table for 30 days and for you to review, and for us to ask for your approval for the July board meeting. Just a few things to align with some of our definitions, make sure they align with the state definitions. And so just the highlights are highlighted in yellow for you to review. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those between now and during the time. So kind of got a few pages, and so just wanted to lay to the point tonight, but certainly if you have questions, to let me know.
The changes are highlighted in yellow, so you can go straight to those.
Throughout the document.
Go ahead with the school calendars, Ms. Haywood.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sams, for graciously serving as a part of this committee. We had a cross-section of parents, students, teachers, administrators that served on the committee for preparing the calendar for the '25, '26, and '26, '27 school years. One of the things that you all have asked is that we want to make sure that we have two calendars out so that parents can properly plan and we can properly plan for each school year. And so tonight, we ask you to review and hopefully approve at tonight's meeting the calendar options for FY '26 and FY '27. What we've done with the calendar options, just so you can kind of see how this looks. This particular calendar for '25, '26, 178 student days, starting the school year in August of '25 on a Wednesday. Of course, staying in alignment with what we've agreed with, making sure that we have a, two weeks at, one week at Thanksgiving, two weeks at Christmas, of course, the week at spring break, and then ending before Memorial Day. 178 student days, 190 teacher days. As you all are aware, we also want to begin with new teachers before August 1st, so that their benefits hit before October. We don't want them to go two months without benefits. And then because of retired teachers, we want to end before June 1st. So this would be our '25, '26 calendar. And we wanted to make sure that you all saw, this is the number of student and teacher days down in the corner, just so that we could make sure that was highlighted. So that's '25, '26.
And certainly, if you guys want to table this until next week, to let folks to look at it.
I have a question about that one.
Yes, ma'am.
So when we look at it, Memorial Day's coming early in May. So in order to finish prior to, we're finishing a little bit earlier. I just want to make sure, and I could have looked this up and I forgot, but as far as AP testing, I don't know how far out that window goes into May. Does it go past the 20th at all?
No, it's in May.
It's usually.
It's usually not the last week of school.
No, it's usually not the last.
But I just didn't know with the last day of school being the 22nd, if it could be like the 18th and 19th, because a lot of times.
It could be.
We're going more than 15 days in May, I think.
Let me, let me go back. Years ago, we had a meeting with our community members. This is probably 2011. And they wanted to, the bulk of our business people wanted to start after Labor Day and end before Memorial Day, and that was going to be tough. And so we asked them what was most important, and they said to end before Memorial Day. So that's what we've tried to do consistently over the years, is to make sure we stop. So that's what we've tried to do consistently over the years, is to make sure we stop in school before Memorial Day, and that was our goal there.
And I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we're not.
We can check.
Well, we can certainly check.
I don't know if they go that far in advance, but we certainly can check.
We had the high school, both high school principals were a part of the committee, and so that wasn't, I mean, again, a part of the conversation, we talked about testing, and there wasn't any concern, but we certainly can follow back up with the APIs as well, just to make sure, to make sure that AP testing is not a problem with the twenty-second being the end of the school year for that school year, for twenty-five, twenty-six.
It would actually be the twenty-first.
It would be the twenty-first, yes, ma'am. So we can certainly check that, to make sure.
Looks like we ended on the seventeenth this year.
Okay.
Okay. And then the twenty-six, twenty-seven. Would start on a Thursday, August the sixth, ending on May twenty-sixth, because Memorial Day is on the thirty-first that year, so.
Again, if you guys choose to table this and let the folks see it, that's not a problem.
That's certainly okay as well.
I know there's a lot of information.
Lot of information, but do want to thank those committee members that came out. We had a lot of rich discussion. Very thankful for the parents that were part of that. They were very appreciative of being able to have a voice in, speaking on what the calendar looked like, so I wanted to make sure we publicly thank them for being a part of that process. So thank you all.
All right, Ms. Hills, it looks like you have the rest.
We're asking the board to approve the purchase of Parent Square. It's a communication tool. Currently, we use One Call Now, you probably have heard that come across at home. I know when I was a principal, every Sunday night, One Call Now. Well, of course, things have changed a little bit. The rationale for, for changing the communication service, Ms. Dozier kind of led the process with this, based on feedback, feedback results from the communications audit. I don't know if you all remember that, in two thousand and twenty-one, we did a communications audit in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, and overwhelming majority of our stakeholders suggested that we consolidate and streamline, because they felt like they were getting things from a lot of different places, information from different places. And adopting this approach would help reduce confusion and enhance clarity and effective communication. And so the evaluation committee was established, and representatives from the schools were brought in. You had teachers, assistant principals, and principals. You had representatives from the district office, including assistant superintendent and student services IT, student information, principals, the assistant principals and parents. And then you also, they started having meetings in September to review the need for a product based on the audit and functionality of One Call Now. Digital presentations were conducted with three companies. I'm gonna try to pronounce the first one, Aptigie, I think that's right. Parent Square, School and School Messenger, and after review the three communication tools, Parent Square was chosen. Here are just some key benefits of Parent Square. Of course, replaces One Call, One Call Now, and all other notification platforms used by schools. Parent Square has purchased, has purchased Remind, you probably know about Remind, if you've got a high school or somebody's got Remind at the high school. They purchased that in two thousand and twenty-three, and they're working now to incorporate that functionality in with Parent Square. It allows for two-way communication between parents, teachers, and school administrators, including embedded newsletters, so they'll have a parent square and a student square. It enables the district and school administrators to monitor all communication tied to the site. Right now, school administrators can't monitor Remind, they can't, they can't monitor that. And then user and mobile-friendly platform with Modern Dashboard, and they can also share, so the things that Ms. Dozier puts out on social media, she can now put it through one platform and be shared across all the platforms, so it's a consistent message. Then parents can customize their account settings. For example, if they don't want to receive messages until a certain time, they can set that up. They can get a digest, instead of getting a message here and a message there, they can set up digest as well. And then it allows secure document sharing. If you, if you have a child in the school system now, you know that beginning of the school year, they receive a Laserfish, you receive the, a link to complete all of the forms at the beginning of the school year, it will all go through this particular platform now. So that cost would then be used to help defray the cost of this. And so we're asking to purchase this. Parent Square is a part of the TIPS co-op that we participate in, and so here you see the cost, forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-four cents per year, and that's for year one, with a twelve-month term, with sixty-four hundred dollars for the onboard, and of course, that's the setting up, pulling in all your rosters, your names and all of that information, resource kit, implementation, all of that, for a total of fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-four cents. And we will use what we have normally spent on One Call, which is approximately, I have that here somewhere, One Call was twenty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars, and Laserfish was eighteen thousand dollars, so those costs will come together to help defray the costs of that. But as you can see, we get a lot more functionality out of this particular tool, and be able to streamline things into school, into, into one particular vendor. They'll be able to assign things to coaches, assign opportunities to coaches, to teachers within this as well, too, and they'll archive the, all of the data for seven years, so.
And you said it's two-way communication.
It is two-way communication, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Any, any other questions for Ms. Hills?
The next are three, three policies. I know Dr. Spence shared those with Mr. Madala. The first is the paid parental leave. Our legislature recently approved to extend the paid parental leave from fifteen days to thirty days. So we are doubling the amount from a hundred and twenty days, a hundred and twenty hours, excuse me, to two hundred and forty hours.
This is not a choice here.
Yeah, it's not a choice, that's a law.
From one twenty to how many?
Two hundred and forty hours, which is equivalent to thirty days. Questions about that? The next one is our internet, is a revision of our internet, our employee computer and internet use. As you all know, artificial intelligence is becoming a buzzword, or AI is becoming a buzzword, and it is definitely creeping into education. And Kristi Jones had, who works with our schools and educator, a technology, worked with the committee to help make sure that we've got some pieces in place that help hold everybody accountable for how we use artificial intelligence, in particular, how we're using student data, or if we should use student data or not using student data, so if it ever becomes a concern, we have a board policy that tells us how we are supposed to govern ourselves. We already had this in place, and so what we did was just, in yellow, you see the pieces that were moved, definitions were made, and so we added artificial intelligence in to places where we already were making allowances and accountability for things with the internet, social media, social networking platforms of that sort. So all the highlights are, all of the changes are in yellow, and if I've moved something that is in yellow as well. This, this as well will lay on the table for thirty days, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those questions as well. And my final one is simply our family, our board policy on family, federal family medical leave act. It's just a simple add at the very end, which allows us to run concurrently. FMLA under federal law shall run concurrently with any leave provided under the state law, so making sure that it all runs concurrent. Our state, like our paid parental leave, runs concurrent with FMLA now, this just makes them coincide with each other. That's all it does.
Any questions for Ms. Hills? Sams, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, everyone. You know, people ask if we get a break in the summer. I think those are some of our longest meetings, and we have extra meetings, too, so no, we don't. So thank y'all for all of that. All right, so we have some executive session items, so I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for land, legal personnel. It's all due. Moved by Ms. Given.
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Edgy. All those in favor of adjourning to open session, or executive session? Okay. That was all. Sixteen. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Oh. Especially our recording. Oh. Open session?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hulte, second by Ms. Gibbons. All those in favor? It's unanimous at 6:38. Oh, I guess we're gonna need to adjourn this meeting. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our work session.
Second.
Wait, Mr. Edgy with the motion and Ms. Gibbons with the second. All those in favor of adjourning our work session tonight? And it is unanimous at 6:39.
Can we take this thing? Leah, just.
Good evening again, everyone. So I'd like to officially call to order our regular meeting for June 11, 2024. We'll start with an invocation and pledge by Dr. Jürgen.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day, all the many wonderful blessings that you've given to us. And we thank you for this summer, for time of rest, the time of play. Or during this time, we ask for your safety be upon all the employees and students of the system. Or may we continue to do your will in all things. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Jürgen. All right, Ms. Dozier is here with our spotlight. Thank y'all for waiting. I'm so sorry to keep you.
All right, good evening. Jane Makin Media Specialist Casey Smith is known for the supportive connections she makes with those in her school. So much so, she is described as someone who always goes above and beyond for her students and colleagues, who lends a hand whenever needed, and is who is willing to share valuable knowledge with all the media specialists in the district. In her words, "I always have high hopes for my students. I want to see them be successful in the here and now, but I also want to see them be successful in life. I want all of my students to find the love of reading, even if it is just the love of one book while they're in middle school. I hope my students leave Jane Makin thinking that the library was a fun place to be." In April, Mrs. Smith was recognized for her contributions to our school system as the 2024 Media Specialist of the Year. So please join me and congratulate her on this well-deserved honor.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do.
Speech, speech.
I just want to thank all my other fellow media specialists. Glenn Kelly has been a great place to work as a media specialist and as a teacher. I've had great leaders and principals who allow me to kind of just do my thing and support my students and my teachers. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
She was looking at her principal.
All right. Next, we'd like to recognize the tremendous support of Satilla Grocery has provided to our school district. Since 2022, they have held a monthly roundup campaign, allowing customers to round up their totals to the nearest dollar. The funds collected through this initiative go directly to supporting extracurricular and athletic programs across our schools. Last month, their roundup campaign had a record-breaking result, raising more than $2,800 for Burrows Milet Elementary Olms. And to date, they have raised just about $70,000 for Glen County Schools. Tonight, we have Satilla Grocery owners Leah Hickox and Maddie Franklin with us. So please join me in publicly thanking them for their generosity, partnership, and continued support of Glen County Schools.
Thank you for the opportunity for us to be here tonight. It's been a great program. We also do like Powerade Roundup in the summertime for these football players that are working so hard. So I guess we're about, we've donated about 10,000, I think, about 10,000 Powerades in two years. And so, we're already right now, this month, they've already gotten 90 cases donated for Bozakai, and then we'll do it again for Glen Academy next month. So thank you to everyone for your support. Those cents really add up.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Maddie, you don't have anything to say?
No.
Hey, she makes sure those cashiers are asking about Roundup.
That's right. They do too, every time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we did not have any citizens come to address the board. We'll move to the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So will.
A motion by Ms. Gibbons?
Second.
Second by Mr. Madala. All those in favor of approving just the items as listed on the agenda, not the actual approval of the agenda items? Mr. Madala's giving me a look. So all those in favor of approving the agenda as it is presented? Raise your hand. Okay, unanimous. So we'll move forward on the agenda to the consent agenda portion. So the following items I'll consider for the consent agenda. Number seven, the approval of the May 9, 2024 work session meeting minutes. Number eight, the approval of the May 14, 2024 regular board meeting minutes. Number nine, A, personnel. These items were just reviewed recently. Number nine, B, field trips. Nine, C, one, the GUD report. Nine, D, one, approval of the April 2024 financials. Nine, D, two, approval of the Infinite Campus renewal. Nine, D, three, approval of the Edgenuity renewal. Nine, D, four, approval of the Taylor School Performance Matters renewal. Nine, D, five, approval of the Go Guardian impair products. Nine, D, six, approval of the Creative Curriculum. Nine, D, seven, approval of the Edgolodge Transportation Software renewal. Nine, D, eight, approval of the PaperCut software purchase. Nine, D, nine, approval of the Incident IQ Help Desk Annual Renewal. Nine, D, eleven, approval of the Five-Year Facility Plan. Nine, D twelve, approval of the fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven school calendars. Nine, D thirteen, approval of the Parent Square program. Nine, D fourteen, approval of the Board of Education parking lot gross maximum price. We have several policy revisions that will be on the table till our July meeting. So nothing else on policy for nine E. Okay. Is there anyone that would like to change or delete any of the items listed here?
The ones we approved as listed.
Okay.
I'll say.
So Mr. Hulsey with a motion to approve the consent agenda items listed. And Mr. Edgy with a second. All of those in favor of approving those items on the consent agenda? It's unanimous? Thank you. So we have one remaining item. Nine, D ten, the approval of the flexible benefits proposal. We heard from Ms. Seals and Ms. Cody tonight. Is there a recommendation on that?
I'd like to make a recommendation. We table that until our next official meeting.
Second.
Okay. A recommendation by Mr. Manziel to table nine, D ten, approval of flexible benefit proposal till our next official meeting. And second by Ms. Gibbons. I do have a question on that. So, Mr. Manziel, if we do the meeting at the end of June, you don't want to vote on it then, you want to wait till the July meeting?
Uh-uh. We can table, because that'll be an official meeting.
Okay, okay. Literally special call.
Right, it'll be a special call, but it'll be the next official meeting.
Okay. So that's my question. Any other questions about that? All right, all those in favor of tabling nine, D ten, approval of flexible benefit proposal till our next official meeting? Okay, it's unanimous? I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for legal.
So be it.
And personnel?
And land.
And land, okay. Land, legal, personnel. Anyone that want to make a motion?
So be it.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Gibbons and a second by Mr. Edgy. All those in favor of adjourning to, or moving to executive session? And is this unanimous at six forty-nine?
Okay, motion by Mr. Mansell to enter into open session and a second by Mr. Gibbons. All those in favor of reentering open session, it's unanimous at 7:42. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our regular board meeting.
We need to talk about, are you going to do dates outside or you need to do...
Yeah, that's just a question.
Okay, make a motion we adjourn.
Okay.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Mr. Mansell, a second by Mr. Halsey. All those in favor of adjourned board meeting, it's unanimous at 7:43.
I'll make a motion to get Frisbees to vote real like your game.
Like...
I can see if I would...